All right, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting for the planning board. First thing on our agenda is 487 Glendale Road, a site plan review. Okay, how you doing today? Good. TJ?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Yeah. Um. Looks like you're going to do some thought training.
Yeah.
Off-site.
Yes, yeah, yeah, basically, I just need real proof of my business. So in order to take a professional certification exam in Florida, I need real proof of of a business and that's
Yeah.
That's why I have my trainings been either at my own or off-site.
So basically, it'll be just an office.
Yeah.
Pretty much so. Any questions from the board members? No. So it looks like you've pretty much nothing. No materials delivered, no signs, no equipment, nothing. So you just need
Yeah.
Motion. Go ahead.
I move that the application for Mr. Dwyer to have a business at this place of residence on 487 Glendale Road.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Very good. We're all set. We've got, she can, not tomorrow. Tomorrow?
Yeah, that's right, Monday. You can go to Eva for your certification.
Okay. You're outside. Yes, thank you.
Tomorrow. He said tomorrow.
Okay. Next on the agenda is we'll go through some of these minutes, meeting minutes. The first one. It's going to be August 11th, 2021, the public hearing minutes, and that would be for myself, Madison, and Jason.
Mr. Chairman. Will we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting, August 11th, 2021?
That's a public hearing.
You're doing regular.
Regular.
Oh, geez, which one?
That's okay.
Which one are we doing?
We're gonna do regular.
Regular?
Give me a minute.
No.
Yeah, okay. Motion, Madison, second. All in favor? Okay. Public hearing minutes for the special permit 2021 C, 16 Summers Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the public hearing minutes, special permit 2021 C, 16 Summers Road, of August 11th, 2021.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Public hearing. Case 2021 B, 2 Summers Road, for July 28th, 2021.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes. For 2 Summers Road, for 2 Summers Road, case 2021.
Okay, next one. Public hearing case 2021 B, 2 Summers Road, for September 28th, and that was going to be all of us. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna close the regular meeting at this time and open up the continuance for the public hearing. I'm going to read the governor's mask update that I should have done previously, but I didn't, and I'm sorry for that. The updated CDC guidance continues to state that individuals who are fully vaccinated may, as a general matter, resume many of the activities that they were engaged in prior to the pandemic without wearing a mask or staying six feet apart, except where otherwise required by federal, state, or local laws, rules, or regulations. In response to the recent spread of the Delta variant, however, the CDC's updated guidance does recommend that even fully vaccinated persons wear masks or face coverings when indoors if other risk factors are present. In light of the information provided by the CDC, and in order to maximize protection on vulnerable individuals from the Delta variant, the Department of Public Health now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when not indoors and not in your own home. When indoors, not in your own home. If you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at an increased risk for severe disease because of your age, or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is at increased risk for severe disease or is unvaccinated. But we just Yep, we have some new plans.
Six copies.
Six copies. Are they?
Are they just updated sheets?
Yes. Okay. Let me see what I got here. Is it a complete?
We just choose one.
Yep.
Three, four, five.
Six, seven.
Six, seven. Do you want to take this step?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So.
One more. No, no, no.
Okay. Um. One minute.
Counselor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary, for setting fifteen minutes away. And I just wanted to let you know that Attorney Seth Williams and Chair of the State Committee, Jeff Peretti, are unable to be here this evening, and they asked that I would represent the committee, so I just wanted to make sure that.
Very good, thank you. Counselor. Okay. Since we really haven't had time to look at these. I think the big bone of contention was the last time you were going to go away and look at whether you could move your retention basins.
Exactly, so for the record again, my name is Daniel Roby. My business address for the record is 124 Shakaroe, Suite 8, East Little Mass, 01028. I also have with me, Roby Benedetto, he's from the firm of Sherman and Frederick's. He's the engineer who put together the plans that I did for you. His address for the record is 3 Converse Street, Palmer Mass, 0106A. So when we were last before the board, the board had basically asked for three revisions to the plan. The most significant change that we've made to the plan based on that conversation of the board and presidential brothers is that we were asked to create a 50-foot no-disturbed buffer between ourselves, our project, and our residential apartments. So when I say undisturbed, we're going to leave the land as it exists today, and we're not going to tamper with it at all. And that's depicted on the hatchmarks that you see on this revised plan. So anywhere you see a hatchmark, again, that's that 50-foot buffer. So we were able to accomplish that by doing a couple of things. We did have to remove from our proposed plan two buildings. So two 30-foot buildings were removed from our plan. Two additional buildings that you see on our plan were reduced from 30 feet to 20 feet. So that gave us the room, that gave us the space to put our detention basin, or to move the detention basin, as was repressed by the board. So the detention basin has been moved from the front of our project off of East Little Mass Road, and it's been removed from the rear of the property. And again, you see that 50-foot no-disturbed buffer area. Where we did put it is where we put, we removed those two buildings and squared, scaled back these two additional buildings, so our detention basin is here. So again, we do now honor the board's request and the neighbor's request that there be a 50-foot buffer that is will not be disturbed and it will that there be a 50-foot buffer that is will not be disturbed and it will be natural. We are also able to make sure that we continue to be minimal of 100 feet away from any neighboring wells. And we are at least 50 feet away and significantly more than any of our neighboring septic systems. So again, we do not have any adverse impacts on any of the neighboring wells or our septic systems. The second additional change that you'll notice on the plan is that we did incorporate in the plan an eight-foot dark vinyl fence. So that will surround the project. That'll be around the perimeter of the fence. And again, it was suggested to us that it be eight feet in height, and we've complied with that. So again, the second addition to the plan, in addition to the 50-foot no disturb buffer, is there is now an eight-foot dark vinyl fence on that fit, inside that 50-foot buffer. The third major plan that changed that we made to the plan was indicated to us is that we did a sidewalk off of East Long Metal Road. That has also been incorporated into our plan. So those are the three major changes that you'll see in your plan. All the other representations that we made prior to tonight's meeting remain constant. So for example, again, we are dark, dark sky compliant with lighting. There is no lighting that is jetting off of our property. All of our lighting is here on our own property. Again, the buildings will be no higher than nine foot six inches as before. Again, we did reduce that based upon some comments that we heard from the public. I think another major thing that the board should consider also is that, again, we did change the original plan to have a metal office building. So what you'll see from the street is a stick-built custom building that is very consistent and in my opinion, a little nicer than the other commercial establishments around. So again, we're trying to stay within that natural character, that rural character of the town. So again, all the representations that we made at prior meetings remain intact, except for those three changes that we talked about, which again is that 50-foot no disturb buffer between ourselves and our residential quarters. We having kept included an eight-foot vinyl fence along the perimeter. And again, we have incorporated the sidewalks. So from our point of view, we think that this plan has come as a result of a number of things. Most importantly, the comments from the board, comments from the public, and we feel like we've put together a really strong plan. We are really excited to be in Hammond, and we're hoping they can give us the opportunity to do that. Questions from the board.
So there's two new buildings. The ones that are on the left side of there, those will only have lights.
Exactly. There'll be no lights. We have designed it so there's no lights along this perimeter, nor are there any doors along this perimeter. There are no lights along this perimeter, nor are there any doors along that. And again, all the lights will be motion detected as will our security system.
So the two retention basins or infiltration bases looks like once the four bay, sediment four bay.
That's correct. This is the four bay and that's the base itself.
And deeper than three feet or?
Yes, both the four bay and the basin are.
I pardon me?
They're both deeper than three feet.
I think, okay. Yeah. One of them occurs right at that test pit. It looks like Test Pit 3, where there was some issues, I think, before was Test Pit 3. Test Pit 3, there was an issue before. I'm saying an issue. You have weeping and standing at 77 inches. Am I correct on saying that?
That's correct. That is. Bottom four has a test information.
Yeah, and that's where one of the test pits is located, right in that.
There's a call out specifically for the basin on there, and we're pointing out that our bottom basin is almost three feet higher than that point. Max BP standard is two feet.
Okay.
So we're meeting that.
I see what you're saying. You got a 2.9 offset from the estimated seasonal high groundwater, right? That's what it looks like. Yeah, okay. So, okay, just bear with us for a minute if you would.
I think there's a typo on the infiltration bases. That's supposed to be six foot then. Yes, it is. Okay.
Can you tell me the page?
Four, seven. Infiltration basin should say six foot of them. Stormwater controls are all within the bounds as well. Mr. Rob, you said eight foot around the entire property.
That's correct.
So is it called out how many square could be of storage? Proximal 43, sorry. And it was originally 55. Thank you.
So. Question I had. So in our bylaw under the Water Protection District, which I'm not sure, I'm looking at it, it looks it looks like it falls outside of the Water Protection District. Am I correct in saying that? So you're you've got two wellheads. So your second one, if I look yet for page four or sheet four.
Yep.
Um, yeah, right there where your finger is, that's the maximum. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay. So it falls outside of the, that disretention basin falls outside of the Water Protection District.
That's correct.
Okay. Because if it was within it, then.
You, okay.
You, you, you read the book.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Sure. Okay, page 59. Paragraphs. Page 59, paragraph seven. Basically, about halfway down, all recharge areas shall be permanently maintained full working order by the owners. Infiltration systems greater than three feet in depth shall be located at least 100 feet from drinking water wells. So you've met that requirement. And it's, and again, outside of that the Well Protection District. And it says infiltration basins shall be constructed in three-foot minimum separation between the bottom of the structure and the maximum groundwater elevation. Gate will be so we can't see through it. Similar something.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It'll be aluminum.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sorry, it'll be aluminum. It won't be vinyl. Solid. I saw.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Um. I'm going to open up to
Yes.
President's. Yes, Mary.
Mary, per setting fifteen medical rings. Can we have a copy of the of the plans?
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee a problem, but right now.
You don't have an extra one.
We, we don't have an extra one.
Okay. All right.
So.
Yeah. So, thank you. I am representing that same committee this evening. And I'd like to start with a quote that came out today in the Times. And it was a quote from one of the board members, and it's just something that I want to clarify for the rest of the board. So the quote says from one of the planning board members, and it was on the October 27th meeting. We can, we can't deny a special permit simply because citizens show up to oppose it. We want you to know that we understand that, that we understand that you cannot just say no because you have a room full of people plus 500 more who oppose this. But what we want you to know is that we have given you evidence that helps you to say no to this, to both of these projects. So we are not opposed to self-storage. We have self-storage here in town. And I don't believe you had this kind of a ground swell when self-storage came in because it was located in an appropriate area. We have three major concerns that we would like to reiterate for you. One is the rural character of the town. Both of these projects do not reflect the rural character of this town. The second are property values, and it's possible there is a member of Stiefel, resident of Stiefel View here today that may speak to his property values. But one of our major concerns are water supply. These storage sheds and the other project are taking up eight acres of land with permeable and impermeable asphalt. Both projects have discussed both of those types of asphalt. And one project says this is the best thing that you can put down, and the other said this is the best. And they're two different, one's permeable, one's impermeable. So a question that I'm wondering if the board has is well, what's the best? Is it impermeable or is it permeable? Because that's critical to water, the water supply and to store water. So that's a question that I'm hoping that you might raise. So we have provided you, today you have a letter in your packets from us that lists eight reasons why you could say no to this project. And those are all backed up by the town bylaws. So we have gone through the bylaws and we backed every one of these planes up with the bylaws. And then we have given you case law that also backs up our position as to why we are in opposition of the, for these two projects. So what I'm hoping you understand tonight is that we're not coming to you because we don't want self-storage. We're coming to you with very serious reasons why we oppose this. So what I would like to do tonight with your approval, we have some experts that we would like to testify this evening to help you understand our concerns over the water supply. So tonight we would like to concentrate on the water. So if it is appropriate, I would like to, I have four people that would like to speak. Patrick Coyne will be speaking about water. Mark Feeny will address stormwater. Joseph Civilian will address procedural issues that we have concerns with. And Ted Brown will also address water issues and property values. So we do have four people that we would like to present to you this evening.
About how long do you figure they'll speak here?
I would say Patrick Coyne. Hopefully we can give Patrick at least 15 minutes. And then the others will be quick, five to 10 minutes, obviously, five minutes.
Any.
So, thank you. So if, if, if you could, if you would please recognize Patrick Coyne first, and he is sitting in back over here.
Good evening. I think I can do this better than 15 minutes and do my best. I am Pat Coyne from 20 South Weeg Road here in the Indian. And I think most of the meetings, I think I missed one or two, but I kept a pace with various things in the paper. So I think I'm up to speed. This evening I wanted to talk about things that I have found, as I mentioned in my cover letter, if you had a chance to glance at that. You know, in my career, I worked in large financial institutions. I worked in investment areas and M&amp;A areas. So I have experience looking, going to due diligence exercises on investments. And in this instance, I took the perspective of what are the sort of the regulatory impacts and the risk impacts of this project? And that would have been something in my, say, my insurance career that it would have worked on. And so I've researched this pretty well, I believe, and I put together this material with the tabs. And I've highlighted the things that I thought would be important for you to look at. I'm not going to read everything. And so I'll go through the eight tabs. And then certainly if you have any questions. But I do have a, I'll say a professional conclusion on this. And my focus is more about risk in terms of financial risk, not just health risks. We have been talking a lot about health risks. Clearly, there is a financial risk to these proposals to the town elected. I like those. The first thing, I've learned a lot about water, towards the, the regulation of water. And it's worthwhile to note that in addition to the wells, the private wells in town, we have two public water systems that are within the scope of this project. And I, there's, there's one here that basically works for the low-income housing community there. Let's name it. What do we call it?
My centennial.
My centennial.
Centennial.
So, 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 so one, one, I believe, primarily is focused on that. And the other water system I know supports Reddiker, so I believe it supports Reddiker and Mall and Dunkin' Donuts, okay? Those are regulated by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, not regulated by the town. And those two water. And those two water units are clearly potentially impacted by anything that might source of pollution that might emerge. The protection area, the recharge area for these could be as long as a half mile. Okay, so that goes well past the self storage units. Okay? So there's a lot of detail, there's a formula to calculate the recharge area. There's, and just one more point, there's two ways the state looks at these types of wells. In one way, they talk about zones, zone one, two, and three. Okay, here in Hammond, we are not, we don't use that. Enforcement. We don't, we use what is called the inter. Inter interim, excuse me, interim wellhead protection area. Okay? Which is essentially, the idea is the same to protect the source water at these the well. Okay? So we have that, I'll say, regulatory regime in place, and it has its own ways of measuring the area of impact. Okay? So that was new to, that was obviously something I had not understood, but I have spoken with. In addition to our local regulators, I've spoken with the Mass DEP, and I've spoken with the United States Environmental Protection Agency. And they confirmed that these two water sources are public water, community public water systems. Under the. Oversight of the Mass DEP. Okay? So just that as background. That sort of drove sort of my direction as I looked at various, I'll say, regulatory issues. So let me go through the tabs. Okay? And I would say, you know, the first tab is much of what I just told you. You can see the first one. I have confirmation from the DEP that yes, essentially, these are community public water systems, these two wells. They're regulated by the Mass DEP and are subject to all the Mass DEP regulations. That's that's was the sort of the bottom line. You know, behind that, I've I've copied the maps from here in town of the site. And you'll see that I I. I'll say a sort of a made an attempt at locating these public water systems relative to these two projects. And I think I was pretty close, because just using my own. Direction there, I was able to locate one of them. So not perfect, but probably pretty close. And each of them. Is within eight hundred and fifty feet. Each of these public water systems is within eight hundred and fifty feet of these self storage facilities. So that's basically just mapping it out. There's more content in this section. On how the state defines the zones. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's all about protect, protect, protect the source water. And I said, we're not in a zone one, two, and three. But we do have the IWPA. So now you get into, okay, how do we protect this environment, whether it's in zones or in the IWPA? And the state has got very prescriptive guidance around that. Okay? And they give some guidance to people that are sort of monitoring wells and when wells are being built. And one of the checklist they provide talks about storage. And it talks about, you know, how do we talk about the risk of a well relative to some of these activities? And of course, it includes awareness of the storage of liquid petroleum, liquid hazardous materials, commercial fertilizers. And the expectation that all of those things are known about and that they're controlled. So the last, I'll say, in this section, the last couple of pages in section one is a memo from Governor Baker. Giving guidance on model conservation restrictions to protect groundwater wells. And this was just revised in July of this year. And it includes our situation, which is the interim wellhead protection areas. And they talk about prohibited acts in the interim wellhead protection areas. Those include storage of. Hazardous substances or material. Vehicle bodies and vehicle parts. And of course, other things that you would expect, like refuse and trash. Okay? It also includes prohibitive prohibition against fertilizers and pesticides. Storing or applying pesticides. Is forbidden. So once again. That federal regulation here, and you've got, excuse me, you've got state regulations on these public water supplies. It has a lot of guidance around what needs to be done to protect those public waters. In addition to on a local basis, we have what we know to protect our local private wells. That's that's probably the technicals I'll get here. The second tab is guidance from the Mass DEP of drinking from the drinking water program. And it includes a matrix of. Relative risk, high, medium, low to groundwater and surface water. And I'll just go through the things, and once again, I focused on storage. They identified fertilizer storage as medium risk. Pesticide storage is high risk. Chemical storage is high risk, hazardous materials is high risk. And storing petroleum and chemicals is high risk. It also includes, of course, clandestine dumping would be high risk. So that's Mass DEP guidance that effectively. Is in place for these two community public water supplies. The third tab here is guidance from the United States Environment Protection Agency. Which also provides guidance on how to protect your water supply. And it says here, it says generally, private wells do not receive the same services that well supplying the public do. It says, they say the well owners, well owners are responsible for protecting their drinking water. So here we are in our private wells, of course. You know, you have to be, as a private well owners, you have to be very diligent about what's happening to your wells. There's nobody else looking out for you. As opposed to these public water systems. Which has a lot of oversight at the state level and somewhat at the Department of Environmental Protection. So you can read, you know, I highlighted some of the things that you'd be familiar with. You know, what the, what, when these things, some of these toxins make it into the water system, what does it do? And you would be familiar with the things they talk about, cancers and other things. That also includes. The EPA has its whole list of things that are possible contaminant sources to wealth. Of course, it includes fertilizer storage, oil and gas storage, chemical storage. It includes household and chemical storage. End use, swimming pool chemical storage, and lawn fertilizer storage. Those are all things identified as potential well contaminants by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. So after I read, reading all this information about the possible contaminants and pollutants. I thought, well, what do we have here? And what does our town have to protect us? And is there any guidance? Well, of course, there is. There was guidance. When it talks that, you know, someone says, what is the hazardous material? Well, it's sort of like, well, you know it when you see it. Well, no. The town of Hammond, at the transfer station, has very specific guidance. So if you look at tab four, you'll see what the town considers hazardous. And it's anything with labels that I'll say caustic, toxic, corrosive, poison, flammable. Warning, danger, precaution. Those are all hazardous items to the town. And that's a very broad sweep. I know I've got this in my garage, right? These hazardous items.
Excuse me, Mr. Coyne.
Yeah.
Where are you saying that that's what the town considers to be hazardous?
Well, that's what the guidance is at the transfer station.
That's, that's a result of what they can accept. At the transfer station and where the end result, it's not a, it's not a town regulation. So. Hazardous materials will have a, there'll be a DOT definition of hazardous materials, just as the DEP definition of hazardous materials.
Right. I think it is guidance from the town.
It's not from the town, it's from the towns, whoever's receiving material from the transfer stations, from the end use. So those, those materials are prohibited by the hauler and by the transfer station that receives waste from.
Okay.
And transfers.
But it is, it is a definition of, of you as a homeowner. It falls into a category called hazardous that needs to go be handled differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're throwing it in the trash.
Yes, that's forbidden. It's hazardous. It needs to be treated differently.
If you're throwing it in the trash, yes. But there's different. There's different agencies that will regulate hazardous.
Sure.
So. Just want to make that clear, that that isn't a list of what, of what hazardous materials are. The DOT has their own list of hazardous materials. The DEP has their own list of hazardous materials listed at forty.
Right.
Forty, three times CMR forty.
Sure.
Mass contingency plant. So. I just wanted to point out that that's not a inclusive.
All inclusive.
A lot.
There's a lot more, you would say, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'm happy to hear that. So the next piece of regulation that I found that the town has that talks about, I'll say, hazardous or pollution. It was just recently adopted on May tenth at the town meeting. This relates to the. Erosion and sediment control for stormwater management. Okay? This is the last page of section four. And I was interested to see there that part of what the town has. Stated is that, you know, we need to attain federal water quality standards. And that is significant, because I was looking for something that said federal. Relative to all of this water action. So we are. We have said that the town has said, we want, we will attain federal water quality standards, maybe to the extent. There is anything else that maybe it's local or whatever. We're, we're at the highest standard you can get to, which makes sense. And also in this. Document, it talks about, you know, we need to provide for the recharge of groundwater acreage, which is what this is all about, recharging the acreage for those wells. And it doesn't talk about pollutants. There's a list of pollutants that include non hazardous liquid and solid waste. Hazardous materials and waste. As well as another list, there's, as you said, there's very specifically what hazardous items are. So that was, that was sort of my second step was, okay, we're concerned about these hazards, and what are they? What are, what are they to the town? And how might we have some definition of those? So the next thing I thought about, well, if the hazardous items enter the offer. You know, where do they go? How far do they travel? Okay? Because I know we're, we're talking about distance here, distance to wells and distance to septic systems. So if you go to, so if you look at. At five. The title there is water contamination. How far do the pollutants reach? And they say that while the groundwater below the earth surface is typically well protected. Pollutants which seep in the ground can penetrate these water stores and contaminate the water we depend on. It goes on to say that spilling a single gallon of oil can contaminate as much as one million gallons of water. A single gallon of gasoline can contaminate seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. That's a lot of pollution. Everybody spilled some of this in their lifetime around the garage or home. The next document in this section is, and I won't go through it in detail. It's a study from the main Department of Environmental Protection, where they were looking at, you know, setting appropriate regulation around. In this instance, it was a gasoline type product. And what would be the appropriate distance to have a terminal from, say, fresh water? And so without going through all the detail. I would, and they talked about the chemical MTBE that's actually the gasoline. And they say that in this instance, the MTBE contamination in their study of what they're looking at. Probably traveled in excess of two thousand feet. In an indirect path based on the fractures in the rocks. And they said, how much further contamination traveled beyond these locations is not known. So they, they said that those distances of two thousand feet were probably concerned. In their study. And the next section in here is just a Department of the Environmental Protection Agency did a fine article on groundwater contamination. And I won't go a lot in there, I won't go through all that, but I will mention a few things that EPA speaks to. They say that. This is the EPA now, saying that in terms of water supply, in some instances. Groundwater contamination is so severe that the water supply must be abandoned as a source of drinking water. They said, because groundwater moves slowly, contamination can be undetected for many years. This makes cleanup of contaminated water difficult, if not impossible. If the cleanup is undertaken, it can cost thousands to millions of dollars. So they say generally, it says, given the difficulty and high cost of cleaning up a contaminated acreage. Some communities choose to abandon the well and use other water sources. Well, we've seen that even here in Hammond, we've got pollution from the dump, pollution from the salt shed. People are going, have to use other sources of water. So that's sort of a look at the regulatory. View. Here in tab six. I looked at, well, what does the self storage industry itself say about these kinds of risks? Okay, so they have obviously a lot, a lot of interest in insurance for these entities, because they're exposed to this. And what they say is that. Most self storage agreements contain prohibitions about storing property that is dangerous or toxic, toxic in nature. Whether tenants follow these guidelines is strictly their business. Unless they're caught in the act of placing contractually prohibited items in the space. Now, like I said, this is a, this is an, this is an industry advocacy group for their self storage industry. Says, if you examine the insurance policy for your premises. You will likely find a total pollution exclusion, of course. Insurance industry has learned from years that no premium amount can cover the risk to insurers when pollution is discovered at an insured site. Once the pollutant enters the soil, it affects the water table. Effectively escaping confinement, the cost of cleanup is staggering depending on the size of the factory. And then they say, well, how do pollutants, how do pollutants get into self storage sites? Well, they say, there have been isolated incidents of tenants operating meth labs out of, or storing chemicals using production of drugs. Both the drugs and the raw materials are extremely toxic. But they said, well, that's an extreme case of pollutants. So there are many more that are more innocent. They said tenants may store items such as paint or cleaning products. Posing an environmental hazard that would technically fit the definition of pollutants as spelled out in the policy. Because a facility, facility owner can't sufficiently lease its tenants to prevent the storage of such items. Limited pollution removal coverage is essential for handling spills. So when it comes to insurance coverage, they say that the coverage usually extends to the affected storage unit only. Not to surrounding areas, surface or groundwater or other facilities, and not to other storage. Not, not great insurance, right? So that's sort of a view of insurance. I then. Looked at an insurance broker, someone who's in the business of selling pollution insurance. There, they stated, unfortunately, self stored facilities can be very attractive locations. To illegally dispose of potentially hazardous waste, drums and containers. This practice is commonly referred to as midnight dumping. The drums and containers are almost never appropriate to properly contain the waste. And the contents are easily released onto the property. That's the insurance broker who's in the business of ensuring these facilities. So those are some.
So Mr. Coyne, you're, you're saying that insurance won't cover a spill if it goes offsite?
Absolutely.
If it impacts the neighbors?
Not at all. Yeah, that's.
Can we get, Mr. Garby, can we get something from you guys? From. I, I'm assuming you've got somebody in mind for insurance on the property. That states whether or not my, my understand. My understanding, ever any insurance claim I ever worked on with that involved a cleanup. The insurance would not cover the property that was insured, and as soon as the contamination went offsite, they covered any impacts offsite. So that runs contrary to what I experienced with fuel cleanups and that sort of thing. So if we could get some clarification from your proposed insurer or the policy. I mean, I'm not sure how to address this, but that's a. Something I'd like to know. Before we take a vote on. On this tournament, you know, as far as whether or not. Your standard insurance policy is going to cover offsite impacts.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
So the, let's see, tab seven. Because, because this public water system here serves. That community. I took a look at what their sort of statement is at Centennial Commons. And they say that it is the mission and responsibility of the Hammond Housing Authority. Under Massachusetts law to provide decent, safe and sanitary housing at. It is the mission and responsibility of the Hammond Housing Authority under Massachusetts law to provide decent, safe and sanitary housing at affordable rent. So of course that includes ensuring that. This public water system is always safe, I believe they have fifty-six units there. And so that is. And I confirmed, you know, that well is regulated by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. So what's also interesting, if you look at the last page in that section. I noticed as I was leaving Centennial Commons. There is a sign on the post that says drinking water supply area, please protect. And I don't know if there's some some regulatory oversight to that, but clearly they have a sensitivity, as you would expect to. Their drinking water supply, and I don't. How old is Centennial Commons, but that's probably been there a long. So the last section here, because I looked at this all the way sort of from a financial impact. I noted here in the Hammond Wolverhampton Times from April first, two thousand twenty-one. A comment on the Main Street water problem. And the comment was that for years residents along Main Street have suffered from inconsistent water quality. And. They said the town administrator, Bob Markle, noted that the town has secured. Funding that can be used to improve the quality of water for the residents affected. And they were searching for about five hundred and ten thousand, I don't know if they realize that. As something they could get from the rescue. So that just gives you a sense of the scale, that's five hundred thousand dollars for, I think, a fairly limited population of homes. To, and this is not a new problem, and then over time it's cost a lot more than five hundred thousand dollars to fix that problem. So, not to get. Back too early, but. One way to think of this insurance business and these losses is in typically when you look at a loss distribution. The loss distribution for large commercial claims. Generally, they all, they have this this shape, okay, this is pretty typical frequency and losses, okay? And so if you were insuring any commercial business, you know, you have your expected losses. You have some unexpected, and then you have way out in here in the tail, and people talk about tail risks, right? These are your catastrophic losses, right, these are the ones that bankrupt companies and destroy. Communities, right? So. An example of catastrophic losses and what gets insured out here are aircraft, these are airplanes, this is whatever. Very low frequency of crashes, but absolutely catastrophic events, okay? And based on what I've said and what I believe. There's essentially no insurance. Out there in the marketplace for polluted aquifers. They'll be out here in the catastrophic losses. The only people paying for those losses are the community taxpayers. You can, I just read it, there's pollution exclusions everywhere, right, so nobody's, so if the aquifer gets polluted. It's a catastrophic loss. And there's no recovery from any insurance company. The only way, the only way aircraft get insured is because insurance companies band together. They they create insurance pools, there's no one insurance company can block the insurance of aircraft because of the scale of loss.
Mr. Quinn, I'm not sure where you're getting this information, but I've worked on a number of groundwater and soil cleanups that were covered by insurance.
I just, I've just based it on what I, what I've. Read in my research, knows exclusion, but if you have.
I can, I can, I can tell you that I've personally, I I didn't, I was an environmental consultant for over fifteen years. I worked on plenty of cleanups that were covered by insurance. Um, so I I don't, the reason I'm pointing this out is because you're not telling the truth. To to these folks. There are insurance policies out there and there is pollution liability insurance and Mr. Garby said he's going to provide a an insurance.
That's fine, we're gonna, we're gonna stop this now, okay, I appreciate all your information. Okay, it looks like we're going down a little rabbit hole here that we're not. Going to travel down, okay?
Yeah, I understand, sorry.
I have German, no, no. I appreciate, I appreciate all the information, thank you, thank you. You got another person to speak?
Um, Mark V.
Yes. You have a handout or something, Mark, that you've.
I don't know what you have.
I, well, I I I've, I've got a bunch of stuff, so.
I don't know, I have some, yeah.
What do you, you're not gonna work, you don't have anything handed out then?
No.
Okay, okay, we're good, go ahead then, sorry.
Whatever question I have, whatever points are brought up at. The other meeting, I know they're pulling, they're independent proposals. But whatever concerns arise at the other meeting. Do those carry over to this one? So I don't have to go over it again, or you want? You're just, you're on me.
No, I do, I understand what you're saying, and. I guess what I'd ask.
It should, it should, you should make, you should, you should repeat them, I think, down in the rest.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think Mr. Garby knows what was going on in the last meeting. So that's why I would ask you.
Right, but I'm not, I'm not here to help. I'm just here to benefit you guys, I mean, the determination.
Yeah.
That's what I was calling.
Good, sure, Mark, go, go right.
So.
And understand, you know.
You, 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 I, you know what I mean.
I do, would you be more comfortable sitting down?
Yes, I would.
No problem, Mark, thank you.
Here, bylaws to promote the health, safety, convenience and welfare of the inhabitants by dividing the town into districts. And regulating the use and construction of buildings and presence therein. That's the. Purpose. For the town of Hammond zoning bylaw. That was written in nineteen forty-two. Chapter forty-eight. From the state. Was enacted in nineteen fifty-four. So basically, the the purpose remains the same. That the zoning bylaws in the town of Hammond are for the protection of the residents. That's the only point that I'm trying to make. In reading that. That the zoning bylaws are for the welfare of the residents of the town of Hammond. And it's not just the conform of forty-eight. Because the state dreamt it up twelve years later. That the town knew it was an issue twelve years before the state even brought it up. So that was the one point that I was trying to make when I was reading the bylaws from forty-two. When it comes to the self-storage facility. Page seventeen, two point one one five. Self-service. Storage facility. A building or group of structures consisting of individual small self-contained units. That are leased or owned for the storage of business and household goods. Or contracted supplies. Section six. Use regulations, which is on page thirty-two. Principal uses. Four point oh. Is retail and service uses. On page thirty-three, we find four point two eight. Self-service storage facilities allowed in business district. With planning board approval and standards and conditions, see note A. Page thirty-eight, we find no A. The water supply protection district is an overlay zone which imposes additional restrictions on specified uses. Within the water supply protection district permitted uses or uses requiring a special permit. From the S P G A, that you. Must meet all applicable restrictions and requirements of section six point one one. Note that section six point one one prohibits certain businesses and industrial uses. Which may be hazardous to water supplies. Page fifty-six. Six point one one, water supply protection overlay district. And six point one one one, purpose of district to promote the health, safety and welfare. Of the community by protecting and preserving the surface and groundwater resources of the town of Hammond. And the region from any use of land. Or buildings. Which may reduce the quality and quantity of its water resources. Six point one one two on the same page, scope of authority. The water supply protection district is an overlay district and shall be superimposed on the other districts established by this bylaws. All regulations of the town of Hammond zoning bylaw applicable to such underlying districts. Shall remain in effect, except that where the water supply protection district imposes additional regulations. Such regulations shall prevail. So. On page fifty-seven. Six point one one five. Prohibited uses. The following uses are prohibited within the water supply protection district. Business and industrial uses, not agricultural, which generate, treat. Bold letters, store. Or dispose of hazardous wastes, except for the following. Which, you go through the rest of it, we don't apply, self-service storage facilities don't apply, it's agricultural and all that stuff, that you can't stop. Page fifty-nine, on the performance standards. Six point one one six. Which is, quote of six. All hazardous materials as defined in Mass General Law, chapter twenty-one E. Must be stored either in a freestanding container within a building. Or in a freestanding container above ground level with protection to contain a spill. The size of the container storage facility. Which. That was the deal where I told, I said before that. That comes into play at one twenty-two East Long Metal Road. The review requirements for containment slab. Because they were, the building was constructed for the inside storage of an oil, a fuel oil truck. That came out of the town of Hammond. Planning board. It's not being used as such anymore, but that's what it was intended for. On same page, seven. For commercial and industrial uses to the extent feasible, runoff imperious surface shall be recharged on the site. By stormwater infiltration basins or similar systems. Covered with natural vegetation. Such runoff shall be discharged, shall not be discharged directly to rivers, streams or other surface water lines. Drywalls shall be used only where other methods methods are feasible. All such basins and wells shall be preceded. By oil grease and sediment traps to facilitate removal of contamination. All recharge areas shall be permanently maintained in full working order by the owners. Infiltration systems greater than three feet deep. Shall be located at least one hundred feet from drinking water wells. And shall be situated at least ten feet down gradient and a hundred feet up gradient from building foundations. To avoid seepage problems. Infiltration basins and intrenches shall be constructed with a three-foot minimum separation. Between the bottom of the structure and maximum groundwater elevation. This is the one that I went after before, is that. The spring cell tower at the end of Potash. The review requirements. It was disallowed, the location of the tower within two hundred feet of the property line. Because it would create a restriction on residential property. That came from the town of Hammond zoning board of appeals. The reason that it came from the zoning board of appeals. Is because it was a cell power and it was out of the preview of the planning board. So it went directly to zoning board of appeals. Point that I'm trying to make is that. The bylaws, it's it's restricted for, to put a restriction on residential property. Which is the rep, for the welfare of the residents of the town of Hammond. That's why I was maintaining before that your infiltration basins. Should be one hundred feet away from the property line. So that a resident. Would be entitled to move their wealth, which over in that area, you got sixteen footers, you have a bunch of shallow wells. So that they would still be entitled to move their wealth. On their own property and still be in compliance with your infiltration basis. That's where that, that's the point I was trying to make with that. And that shows up on page one oh three, seven point one four. Um, B three. And that's the deal with a setback for the cell power. I'm not trying to say that a cell power is the same thing as an infiltration basin, I'm not trying to say that. Self power is the same as the septic system, I'm just trying to maintain that setback requirements. Per the bylaws should be enforced so that the residents will be able to move their wealth. On their, on their own property and still be in compliance. If they are not in compliance, I'll go back at you, Jason. You can't move your wealth within a hundred feet of a septic system. And you, and you will not be able to move your wealth within a hundred feet of an infiltration basin. Common sense is that the, and you know that it exists because. If it didn't. Then they wouldn't be looking to locate all the wells, that's why they're trying to keep their infiltration basin. A hundred feet away from any existing wells. But if any of those shallow wells need to be removed, to be moved because they're no good anymore. Then you're going to be stuck that they won't be able to, they're going to be in non-compliance. Because they won't be able to move it within a hundred feet of the infiltration base. And that's going to come from the board health, that's going to tell you the same thing. That you can't put a well within a hundred feet of a septic.
But this regulation applies to the water supply protection overlay district.
That's correct.
Ends, that's the northeastern, the end of that is the northeastern. Part of this site, right? That area you're referencing is the top corner of the property, the infiltration basins of residents.
And that's the one where they moved the infiltration basin off of East Long Metal Road, having seen the new plant. They brought it back again. But that being said, where it is moved and they comply with your fifty-foot setback off the property line. Those wells that are are there are in danger because they won't be able to move them. Within a hundred feet of the infiltration system.
No, that that section doesn't apply outside of that circle.
That section doesn't.
This section six does not apply outside of the wellhead protection area, right? So.
Okay.
So this.
So you're going to be able to move their wealth because they're will be entitled to move their wealth. Up to their property line and they still will be a hundred feet away.
Yes, this is, this is the end of the wellhead protection. This line right here. That's the end of the.
No, 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 that is for the wellhead protection area.
That you're referencing in the red.
No, 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 what you're misunderstanding is. That is the wellhead head protection area for the minimum, just for the element.
But section six applies to this area, right? Okay, you can't take that and apply it to the entire town.
No, no, take it back. What I'm telling you, what I am inferring here is that. What I'm telling you, what I am inferring here is that Board of Health will not let you put a well within a hundred feet of a septic system.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, you're right. Take your, take your little dotted line and apply it to the residents that are on here and, and all the residents. Their own private wells will not be able to be moved back on their property because they, their private wells will be within a hundred feet of, because of that.
Of what, a hundred feet of what?
Of, of the infiltration basin.
Rule that prevents, the regulation you read that prevents a well being within a hundred feet of the infiltration basin does not apply outside of this dash line.
Yes, it does.
No, no, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's okay.
That's the point, but, but I understand.
I, that's not, not in, not in these performance standards, you just read it. You, you just read the regulations, it applies to that area. This entire section you read applies to the area in the northeast corner of that property. So, in other words.
But it, it, it carries over to, it carries over to the Board of Health.
Yep.
For a private well. If you want to put in a private well, you have to be a hundred feet away from a septic system and at this point in time, you will also have to be a hundred feet away from the infiltration basin because you are going to throw it into non-compliance because of the location of the infiltration basin, check that out.
Okay, so you want us to check with the Board of Health to see if residents can move their private wells within one hundred feet of an infiltration basin?
Yes.
I'd like it writing as possible, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then.
Now, I, I got it.
You, you know where I'm going with that?
Yes, that, that makes sense. We can ask certain.
Then on page sixty, six point one-one-seven, oh, and I'm going to go back to that. On page sixty, six point one-one-seven, special permit uses. Did we get by the uses allowed by special permit obtained from the planning board? Commercial, industrial, governmental, or educational uses, which are allowed in the underlying district and which are not prohibited in section six point one-one-five. Where business, the storage facility is not commercial, not industrial, not governmental, or educational uses. Point that I'm trying to make on that is your zoning bylaws are written that they're prohibited. If it's not stated, if you, if it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it. That's in a chart someplace?
It is, it's, it's in, uh, section six. But what yours, and, and let me clarify this again if I could, please.
Yeah.
Um. Basically, you're, you're looking at paragraph six point one-one-seven. Special permit uses.
One.
And this is for the Water Protection District. And it's number one, where it says uses allowed by special permit obtained from the planning board. And then A, what you say is commercial, industrial, governmental, or educational uses, which are allowed in the underlying district, is that?
That's correct.
So, okay, and which are not prohibited in section six point one-one-five.
Right.
So, the underlying district is what?
Business.
Business, okay.
And it's safe business because at the top of the chart there, it mentions business, if you have, um, or, where's the chart, or, where, where all the charts are?
Are you talking in, uh, table six?
Yeah, yeah, table six.
Okay.
And it tells you that up at the top of.
Yeah, the R.
Table six.
R four.
Business, commercial, industrial, all that residence, all that stuff's there.
Correct, so those are the zones. Am I correct in saying that? R four?
Those are uses, yes.
Those are the zones?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're saying is commercial in section six point one-one. You're saying that it's not called out?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying it is called out, it calls out in section six point one-one-seven that you can issue a special permit for commercial, industrial, governmental, or education.
So those aren't zones?
Those, those, those are, actually it says uses. It doesn't say zones, it says for educational uses.
Right.
So it's not a zone, it's a use.
So.
This facility, by definition, is zoned business and it's a business use, that's why I went through all the stuff.
But it's a commercial, but it's.
Retail and service uses.
But it's commercial use.
No, no, it's not.
Yes, yes.
Because.
Because, no, no, it is.
Okay, that.
It is, this is a commercial use. In other words, what they're saying is that it's a commercial, meaning a business, okay? It's a for-profit business. So if you were to use your analogy, okay? Where the business zone is, and if I'm going to talk about water protection, okay? And I can't have a restaurant in town, can I? Because that's a business, that's a zoned business, and I serve water. Okay, so what, you're, you're taking this out of context, commercial meaning a business, meaning a viable business that either serves the public or does a public service? That, yes?
Because, reason being is because.
Okay, so commercial use is an activity carried out for, for, uh, fiduciary gain.
Pecuniary.
Okay, so, in other words, what I'm saying is that commercial, meaning it's a business, in section six point one-one-seven. You're looking at a zone, which is tables.
But, but, go back, I'm going back to four. Page thirty-two.
Page thirty-two.
On your chart, page thirty-two. Principal uses.
Say that again, thirty-two?
Yeah, page thirty-two.
Yeah.
Principal uses.
Okay.
Four point zero, retail and service uses.
Yes.
Not commercial, but it says retail and service uses.
So that's a type of business.
Okay, and then on page thirty-three, we will find four point two-eight. Self-service storage facility allowed in business district with planning board and standards and conditions C note A. Now, it's telling me that it's under retail and service uses.
Yes.
And it's, and then I can also go to that same chart, if you go up and down. It'll tell you that here's the business for the use, here's commercial, and here's light industrial.
No, those are the zones. Those are the zones, Mark, that's each zone.
But this thing is telling me point blank, retail and service uses. Not telling me it's commercial uses, it's telling me that it's retail and service uses. But it's a number, like, I understand that, because at this point, you don't have anybody that can handle.
Oh, I can handle it, young fellow.
That's where I'm going with it.
Let me tell you, and I'm telling you, I'm telling you, you're wrong.
Oh, okay.
Point blank, you're wrong.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm actually, I'm actually good with that.
Okay.
So then, on the same page.
Go ahead, which page we talking now, thirty-two, thirty-three, page sixty?
It's going to work, right? Page sixty, six point one-one-seven.
Yes.
Special permit uses.
Yes.
If I go down, go one point C.
Yes.
The rendering imperious of greater than fifteen percent in the area of twenty, of twenty-five hundred square feet, whichever is greater.
Yeah.
Provided that the system for artificial recharge of precipitation is developed. The management of stormwater and any artificial recharge system developed shall be designed to, as not to result in the degradation of groundwater.
Yeah, okay, so.
And then one, if I go to one.
Yeah.
For commercial uses, but you just told me it was commercial. I'm good with this.
So it's a business, yeah.
Oh, okay, but it's a business, but it's a commercial. For commercial uses.
It's not a commercial zone.
I understood, but you just said it was commercial.
Okay.
That's why I said I was good with that.
Okay.
For commercial uses, a stormwater management plan shall be developed which provides the artificial recharge of precipitation to groundwater where fee, where feasible. Recharge shall be attained through site design that incorporates natural drainage patterns and vegetation and through the use of stormwater infiltration basin, comma, infiltration trenches, comma, porous pavement, or similar systems. All infiltration practices shall be preceded by oil grease and sediment traps or other management practices to facilitate removal of contamination. Point that I'm trying to make. What's better? Porous pavement or the system that Dan and Peter Garviev designed?
So.
That's the question, that's the point that I'm, that's the only point that I'm trying, because I know you're treating them at two separate.
Right.
Projects. But all infiltration practices, it's not an either or, it's a system. You're supposed to, so. Dan and Peter, they've created an infiltration basin. They've contained with stormwater per water quality units or whatever you want to call it, storm, storm scepters or. They're taking care of it with their system. Their system, which is the trenches, the infiltration basin, is treating the contaminants because it's running through structures. Your porous pavement, it's a stream, it's straight into the aquifer. But, that's by big Berkshire Design, they came up with that system. But it's not a system, it's a standalone. It doesn't treat your grease, your oil, or your contaminants, it goes right into. But at the same time, I understand, you actually get, you, it actually dawned on me the other night when you told me that it's, well, it's probably section ten, when I was looking for six point one-one, and you told me ten. You're only, you're trying to make, you're, you're making your determination or your decision based on all the information that you're given. Problem being is that I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that Ty and Bond reviewed this project for section five, section ten. And the general bylaws for the Town of Hampden. He didn't touch six, and that's why nothing's picked up on. When he reviewed it for ten, he's just reviewing it for stormwater. He's not reviewing it for six for the Water Protection District. That's why, that's why these guys are, that's why Dan and Peter are telling you that this is the system that we want to use, but they're being noble. They're not, they're not stabbing Berkshire Design because the reason they're using this system is because porous pavement doesn't treat for grease and oil. It doesn't take care of it. But at the same time, Berkshire Design has actually mentioned it that when you look at New Hampshire, he's using University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center and he's using the design for porous pavement. But at the same time, if you dig into it for porous pavement, my problem is, because I don't design this stuff, I build it. So if you look at University of New Hampshire and if you look at page eleven for porous pavement, they put it down at the very bottom. Optional liner for land uses where infiltration is undesirable. Example, hazardous material handling or sole source aquifer protection. So basically, it would render their infiltration system muted because they're not treating it for that grease and oil. So you're putting a big bladder underneath their porous pavement and you just created a big bathtub because the water isn't going, because it won't go into the aquifer and it won't transmit into the underlying soil. But that's for a different meeting. I didn't say, you know what I mean?
So, so you're happy, you're happy with this infiltration system?
Yes, they, they will not, I can't say that because I'm going to find fault with that one, except they redesigned. But I think, I think I'm all good with, I haven't had a chance to look at this line. So. Page sixty-one, requirements for a special permit in the Water Supply District. The applicant shall file nine copies of a site plan prepared by a qualified professional with the planning board. The site plan shall at minimum include the following information where per a complete list of chemicals, pesticides, fuels, and other potentially toxic or hazardous materials to be used or stored on the premise in quantities greater than those associated with normal household use. They already told you that they have no control of what is brought into the units. They try to police it, but you'll only need one idiot and that'll screw it up. And don't quote that.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure she's going to, Mark.
Where's the paper, I, I'm trying to stay awake. And then, um. On. Six point one-one-six, page fifty-nine, dash seven. For commercial.
Yep, we got, we went through this again.
I know, but I told you I'd be back there again.
You don't have to read it.
Same thing that I read.
Don't read it again.
Here, I don't have to, but I'm good. It's, what I'm focusing on that versus the other time that I read it, is all such basins and wells shall be preceded by oil grease and sediment traps to facilitate removal of contamination. And then, all recharge areas shall be permanently maintained in full working order by the owner. Infiltration system greater than three feet deep shall be located at least a hundred feet from a drinking water.
Mark, I'm going to interrupt you again.
No, no, I'm not on that, I'm just getting to the point, here. Basis.
Take the shortcut.
The shortcut is.
Please.
Infiltration basins and trenches shall be constructed with a three-foot minimum separation between the bottom of.
The structure.
The structure and maximum groundwater elevation.
Right, we went through that.
Problem being, I picked up, I, I picked up a number, haven't seen a plan. What's the bottom of your infiltration basin?
The bottom of the infiltration basin is two-point-nine feet above the seasonal groundwater, but it is outside of the Water Protection District, do you understand?
Oh, you're, except.
So what you're reading is performance standards for a Water Protection District, again. I, I'm going to try and correct you, and I know you probably won't accept that.
No, no, you can't.
But, again, it's two-point-nine feet above the seasonal groundwater, um, estimated seasonal groundwater.
Yes.
Okay.
Want to know why? I'll tell you.
Oh, well.
Here, if you look at, here, Ty, you have it in front of you, sheet seven of seven.
Yes, I have it right in front.
Soil absorption area trenches.
So.
The width is two feet wide.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
And the depth is, and the depth is two feet deep with a two-inch stone and a minimum one foot of cover. Now, that detail, so.
Test pit, I'm looking at test pit three. Let's, you gotta go to, you gotta go to test pit three. And at, uh, twenty-eight to ninety-six inches plus, which is eight feet, okay? Um, they had, uh, Red Oak said sixty inches, seven and a half years slash eight. We've been standing at seventy-seven inches, no refusal, so would you explain that to us again, please?
It's seventy-seven inches.
So.
It's seventy-seven inches is the groundwater level, so groundwater.
Estimated season. Est- estimated seasonal high groundwater is two thirty six point one, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct, two thirty six point one. So that would make that the, if it's two thirty six point one, ditch the one. If it's two thirty six, then that would tell me that the bottom of the infiltration basin structure.
Yeah.
Is.
Let me guess.
Two thirty, two thirty nine.
You got it, right on the money. So if we didn't get rid of the one, we would be what, two point nine?
No, two thirty nine, but problem being is that if it's two thirty six point, if it's two thirty six point one.
Yes.
And then you add three feet to it. Then that would make it two thirty nine, correct?
Two thirty nine is the bottom of the basin.
Two thirty nine is the bo, no, two, two thirty nine is the bottom of the basin. That's where I'm coming from is that it's, the detail is three foot two thick.
So the seasonal groundwater is about two feet nine inches below that, estimated seasonal groundwater. Okay?
No, no, but it can't be, that's where I'm coming from, this detail, this detail takes three feet, correct me if I'm wrong, your detail is three feet thick. If you like it, I can explain.
Would you please?
So at test pit three, the existing elevation at test pit three is two forty two point one, that's what's out there right now. When we measured down and determined the groundwater, it was seventy seven inches below. And that set it at two thirty, two thirty six point one. So that's the elevation of the groundwater at that level. We put the bottom of our infiltration basin at two thirty nine, two point nine feet higher than that level. The minimum standard for MASTA EP is two feet, so we made sure we were above that value.
But your detail. On your seven of seven. It's going to tell me that it's a two foot eight plus a one foot cover minimum.
Which detail are you talking about specifically?
Detail on, the detail on your print.
Soil absorption.
Soil seven, 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 soil absorption detail.
That's for the proposed so, so, soil absorption system for the administration building. That's not the detail for this infiltration.
So your infiltration basin doesn't incorporate trenches, it's just.
It's just the basin.
It's just the basin, okay.
Thank you.
And that's for the administration.
Now, Mark, I'm going to cut you off.
Now I have one more.
How long? I'm not going down this rabbit hole with you now, okay, how long?
Question for, question for the design.
Okay, about how long?
We heard about, we heard about vortex units, we heard about storm scepters, the water quality units. I would assume that your drain manholes, it's drain manhole two, three, and four. Because there is no water quality unit detail on your design drawings, they're regular manholes on seven. All they are is a regular drain manhole, there isn't a, there isn't a water quality unit detail on them.
That's correct.
So you are going to have water quality units, it's going, the detail is going to replace the drain manholes? All of them or not? Or are just two, three, and, well, I don't know what your new design is, but it was going to be two, three, and four, I would have made it two, three, and four.
Our proposed, uh, it's called a treatment train. It's the line from where stormwater enters a catch basin and also the EPO trades. Uh, the treatment train from the previous design is the same as this design. They enter a catch basin, which is, I think, put it some catch basin. And then the water is conveyed to the sediment for vaporization. In conjunction with the infiltration basin. Through these various devices, we get at least eighty percent, uh, which is a MASTA EP standard for that. And that's how that is met, that is the same as we did from the previous design, it's the same treatment train. Uh, the mix is, the conveyance is a little different because the, uh, the site has been changed, but the treatment is similar.
So there are no water quality units and there are no vortex, it's like a washing machine that they, you brought.
Oh, I'm familiar with it, yeah, it was not needed for this design.
Okay, but the other design did incorporate that.
I can't speak to that.
Oh, why not?
No, you mean the other site you're talking about, right?
No, the, no, this site, no other designs.
No, I didn't have it either.
Okay, what are the detail with the, of, of, of water quality with? The washing machine, it was like a washing, taken out of seven.
Joe had proposed that. The proprietary, um. Cleaning.
Okay, so he, he was.
So.
He was, I, I think it was, I think he's playing storm scepters, but whatever, pick one, vortex storm scepter, but it's a water quality. He had incorporated that his manholes were going to be water quality. The drain manholes were water quality ones, that was going to take out the seven. So I just went through that there was no detail on the plan because it's a great drain manhole. And I was questioning that whether you're going to change, you can make them all water quality, but you don't need to. But the old design, you only need, you only needed two, three, and four, because that would have treated everything before it went into the infiltration. That, that's the question that I have.
Okay, good, good, thank you, all right. Mary, um, go ahead, what do we got next?
And, and we have Joe Sibilia.
Okay, timeout, Joe, how long?
No more than five minutes.
Promise?
Yeah, time it.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to comment on, uh, the town's appreciation for your work, I mean, seriously, this has been. Quite a grueling exercise, both of these, and I know that you're taking time from your family and your home, so I really appreciate it. I know everyone here really appreciates it. And I know that you've had other meetings with the selectmen, uh, last night there was a meeting with the selectmen on this issue and I. Appreciate the time you came out, John, to do that. And I also appreciate the time you spent on the, uh, the solar project with, uh, with Don, so. Although we may have some differences in this particular, uh, issue. I, I want to share that appreciation for the work you're doing. I want to really focus on one topic here, that's the stormwater, uh, bylaw adopted twenty eighth, two thousand eight, I think, twenty twenty one. And you can refer to the, the letter that I wrote for the, uh, reminder in the Hammond War to have times. And I followed it up with a series of questions today that I laid out to you in the piece that I sent over there. Basically, what I want to focus on, the operative word is prior to. There's two words there, it's very clear in the bylaws. It's prior, prior to the issuance of any site plan approved or development permit for any proposed development listed below. The stormwater management permit or a waiver of the requirement for a stormwater. Must be approved by the designated agent. And for the education of the audience, the designated agent in this case was only appointed last night. The designated agents coordinate with other appropriate boards or commissions, having other permit authority and review procedures for land use. So really what we're, what we're faced with here is that the, the both petitioners haven't really, haven't filed for this, uh. Uh, stormwater bylaw provision that we have in the town. So we're, we're in a little bit of a, of a challenge here. And the first question I asked in this question, and might we, the board may not be able to answer it, it might be legal counsel's. Can the applicant file for a stormwater permit six months after the required time? Now, is, is the, is, is all the debate we're having on the water, is there a fear on the case of the petitioners that these stormwater permits won't be. Approved because of all the challenges with the water? I don't know that yet. Can the designated agent deny the application because of its tardiness? So right now, the, so the, the board of selectmen have been appointed as a designated agent for this provision of the bylaw. And the question is, can they deny this application by virtue of the, uh, tardiness of applying, uh, for this permit? And is this, is this procedural defect grounds for a denial? It's very clear in the bylaws, prior to, it's not concurrent. During last night's discussion at the selectmen's meeting, there was some talk about the language in the bylaws saying concurrent. We went on the website again today, we went to the attorney general's office that approved of the bylaws and it's very clear, it says prior to, that concurrent. If allowed to file late, if for some reason they're allowed to file this late, right? Would the bylaws prevail for two thousand eight, for two thousand twenty one? If the bylaws of two thousand eight prevailed, then the selectmen will decide whether this, these two permits will be allowed, these special permits. If the, uh, uh, bylaws prevail for twenty twenty one, it's a different, it's a different set of rules than the designated agent has authority. And then the final question I have is what authority can waive a late filing? And based on these five, uh, questions that I addressed in this discussions we've been having with the, with the board of selectmen and the planning board. There's a lot of legal questions that are associated with this and we, we have a couple of options. One, the board tonight can vote to deny the petition tonight. Right now, you could decide to take a vote and deny this petition, to take a vote. And the residents here and all the information that we presented you, have given you adequate information to deny the petitioner. And of course, they'll, they'll appeal and then we'll find out whether the, the prior to or concurrent, uh, bylaws apply. Or you can decide to delay this hearing again and have, and have a, a legal opinion, uh, provided to us for, for, uh. Which one of these bylaws apply, two oh eight or two twenty one? Or we could continue to have the residents agonize and cry in front of you over whether or not their wells are going to be affected. Or whether we're going to be taking time out of our schedules, or people are going to be losing sleep, or we're going to be appealing to our neighbors for five, ten, and twenty dollars apiece. To pay for our, our legal fees. That's really what we're facing. So my comments, as I mentioned, will be very brief. Those are, those are the comments and I believe that you have enough information and ammunition to deny the petition tonight. And let the legal process go through the appeal and to take the burden off of the citizens to have handled.
Is this in regards to the stormwater?
Yeah.
Okay, so state, state your name.
Peter Simmons, ortho terrorist, I wanted to correct some, some interchange between Mr. Barossa's point. I work in the insurance industry. And the fact of the matter is that, beginning in nineteen eighty six, general liability policies did not. Cover pollution, that contained absolute pollution exclusion. You may have dealt with instances where insurance paid for it, but that was paid for by insurance policies that were in effect prior to nineteen eighty six. You're not going to get a, a general liability policy to pay for any sort of cleanup involving a storage unit here. Because they just don't, they have absolute pollution exclusion policies.
But pollution liability would cover it. Pollution liability insurance.
It, it's claims made, meaning that the claim has to be made within a period of setting insurance in place. And these types of problems fester for a number of years. We've got policies in place now, it's covered ten years from now. If you've got pollution from this business, this policy that's in effect now. Presuming this claims made policy, that's almost always the instance would not cover it. And you can check with your insurance agents on that, I believe that Richard Green, uh, was a former selectman, maybe current selectman.
He was a selectman and he also, he also was on the planning board, he's an alternate member.
And, and that's probably a reason why the company farm says. Because there's no insurance.
It is, it's clean now, right? So, um, Mr. Sibilia, thank you, I, I don't mean to discount that, okay, I, I. If I could, um. And, and this happens to go with the, what you're asking about is the stormwater permit, am I correct in saying that? You're, you're questioning the application. The stormwater.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the application.
The process.
Bylaws very clear. Let's say that the, the applicant must apply prior to that concurrent or that whatever, it's very clear, prior to.
So, um, apparently Bob Markle reached out to our town council today. Okay, um, and I have an email from our town council. I haven't read it until just now, basically, she did talk to me, but she spoke with Gary Weiner first, okay? Because he was the past chairman, I believe, and he is familiar with this. So I'm going to read this and it goes on to say, basically, this was to, uh, from Rose Crowley to Bob Markle. Um, Gary Weiner and myself. And it says, Bob, I spoke with Gary Weiner this afternoon, we discussed the old and new stormwater bylaw and the procedural requirements. Gary explained that with the planning board chair present, that's me. He had appeared before the board of selectmen last night, which you know we did. Um, to explain how the bylaw works and specifically how the bylaw relates to the storm, uh, to, I'm sorry, to the special permit process. Specifically, the stormwater permit process and the special permit processes are separate. While a project may not proceed before a stormwater permit is issued. The lack of a stormwater permit is not a basis for denial of a special permit. And cannot disturb the special permit timeline. Importantly, failure to act on a special permit because of a stormwater permit has not, has not issued. May result in a constructive approval. Gary's understanding was consistent with my review of the new and old bylaws. Review of the, review of law regarding the interplay of the general bylaws and zoning bylaws. In my conversations with the attorney's gen, attorney general's office. And she concludes, I hope this was helpful. So with, I, I talked to her and basically these are two different independent processes. We have to, as I explained last night to Don, we have very specific timelines. So those timelines may move ahead. And I did say again that these plans are very fluid. As you see tonight, there is a change in the plan that the applicant has made. Um, so councillor Garvey, what I'll be doing is forwarding these off to. Ty and Bond for their review, okay? Um, for the stormwater, I would suggest that you may want to, because this is the final plan as far as you're concerned, right? You're, if we tell you that you've got to move this retention basin, you're probably going to say, I'm done, you know? I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have that crystal ball, okay? But I'm going to inform you that we will be providing these plans to Ty and Bond, okay? And that'll be reviewed for the stormwaters. You, if you would like, um, you can go to the building department and apply for a. Uh, stormwater permit, because now we have the, the, the amount of impervious pavement and everything else pretty much nailed down.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Um, he was not available tomorrow because veterans day, okay? So, um.
So now I'd like to get a copy of that letter and I would also.
Speak to Bob, yeah, to Bob Markle, I don't have, I can't print it out.
I don't mean right now.
Okay.
Oh, get that. And I also, I would also say that in the, in the context of the, uh, water dimensions of this. We, we might find a, a, a healthy debate between the town's legal council and other legal council regarding this. And I certainly understand the idea of the constructive, uh, uh.
Constructive approvals.
Constructive approvals and the timeline, I totally get that. But we're in a situation here where the water is such a critical component in this decision. That to not have at least the rudimentary stormwater permit application in place does a serious disservice to the process.
Um, I think the, these, the original plans were reviewed and they, the eighty something page, and correct me if I'm wrong. Eighty something page. Stormwater management plan was reviewed by Ty and Bond.
When you say it was reviewed by Ty, is that a peer review?
That's peer review, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, so the peer review was performed. Um, and any questions that they had from Ty and Bond, I believe, were addressed.
Are you saying they applied for the stormwater permit?
No, because I can't tell you if they did or didn't, because my process is separate than the stormwater permit process, okay?
Just told me it produced a stormwater.
They, they, as part of this process, they have to submit a stormwater management plan. Right. That was an eighty-something page report that we had to send out to our consultants to review, to basically make sure our consultants agree with their consultants. Yes, Mary.
I mean, I was at that meeting last night as well. And one thing that, uh, Gary did say is that I'm not a lawyer. And he also said that he could not understand why both developers have not submitted this permit yet. He was perplexed by that, couldn't figure that out.
And you heard what I've said? There was, there's a problem. Everything should go to the Building Department to kick it off, okay? So when that is submitted, and, and it was not done that way, okay? Um, there was a previous chairman and I'm not blaming him. That's how the process was run, because our previous building inspector was only part-time. So we continued to do this. And again, you'll hear me repeat this again. I was a chairman for this board previously, okay? And I got my butt chewed by a now judge, okay? Schneider, okay? Mike Schneider.
Callan.
Callan, I'm sorry, Callan. My Cap, was it Callan? He's the, he's the judge. Whatever. Somebody chewed, one of our previous town councils chewed my butt, because he said, why are you looking at these plans? Why aren't the, why hasn't it gone through the Building Department? So I was relieved of my chair position and we went back to just taking the plans, okay? So there was, as I said, a problem that way. And I think Joanne now knows that we are going to send down.
All applicants go to the Building Department.
All applicants go to the Building Department. So that was a, uh, misstep on our part, okay? I admit that. You want to take it to court and I can understand that. We're going to let the Legals Eagles argue this stuff out, okay?
We're also going to refer corrections or improvements on the process. Let me just give one more.
And we're open to that.
Relevant to this case, relevant to this case. I believe that the Planning Department should get a certificate of good standing from the state of Massachusetts for any corporation that applies for a special permit, especially in light of the fact that this petitioner had an involuntarily dissolved corporation that applied for a special.
And we, we went through this already, so.
I'm not talking about going through it. If you're going to make a correction on the process, then we should also make a correction on the process that requires a certificate of good standing.
That's fine.
I'll put that in writing.
All right, um.
And, and we had, we had one, one more person that would like to speak.
How long, Mary? I'm gonna.
A minute.
If that's all right.
Maybe it's a minute to have.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes.
So I made this comment a couple of weeks ago about seven football fields. And I titled my little piece of paper, seven football fields of, of asphalt and metal buildings. And I talked about unintended consequences.
Yeah.
You know, nobody wants to contaminate a well, but it happens. So real quickly, I went and looked on the, uh, on the internet. I went and looked and found, uh, these different things, just in a five-minute, um, search, I found in, in these towns, the drinking water's been somewhat contaminated. East Lawn Meadow and Lawn Meadow, there's issues. Part of Westfield is supplying drinking water to its residents. Palmer has E. coli. In Worcester, you can't drink the tap water. Um, and closer here, Pat talked about earlier, at the dump, we contaminated a well that was years and years ago, but we did it. And then right over here, the salt contaminated, um, four or five houses. We've been giving them water. So it's unintended consequences and, uh, it just leaves us open for another incident. So I have that. And then just real quick, this is pictures. So you'll be happy to see this after tonight. So a picture of, uh, the view of it from Goat Rock. Picture of, of, of the site from Goat Rock. And then some pictures on the back of storage units. So that'll be kind of fun for you, since this was pretty dramatic tonight.
And that's really all we got. Thank you. Okay, Mary, is that it?
All right. Um, John, I would like to just close with how I started. Um, we are not in opposition of this because we oppose self-storage. We're in opposition of this for several reasons that were stated this evening. So I hope we've made it clear to the Planning Board that we're not here because we don't like self-storage. We're here because we have concerns about our property values. We have concerns about the rural character of the town. And our biggest concern is water. And we hope that you see that today, that we're not people here just to shut something down. We're here because we have real valid concerns.
Thank you. Um, okay. Counselor.
Yes, sir.
Hate to do this again, but, um, and I hate to do this to the board again. But I ask, would you like to continue? Open continuance?
Chairman versus what?
What, what are, what's, what are still open issues? What information's going to change?
Um, to me, go ahead. Yes, the stormwater, well, the results of the stormwater review from Ty and Bond, um.
And the insurance. The insurance issue and the board health regarding.
Not, not now, no.
A hundred foot setback.
Now, stop. I'm talking to my board, please.
Yeah, checking with the board health regarding the wall placement.
I got, sorry, Christine.
Oh, um, checking with the board of health regarding wall placement.
If, if we continue this, John, what, what does that mean? That we set half an hour to reveal that information and then we deliberate?
And we would either close the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And deliberate, or we can leave it open and deliberate.
Okay.
And if we leave it open, that means we can get more information, okay?
And we, do we have to decide that part tonight?
No, you just.
And if we, if we don't adjourn this.
Continue it.
Or continue, continue this, then what is the other alternative?
Then we would have to close the public hearing.
Right now.
So if we close the public hearing, we can't receive any more information.
Right. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
I, I know. That's why.
When you say we can't receive any more information, do you mean we can't get the information to the things that we decided to do or felt? Yeah, insurance and Ty and Bond. My thing is that we've committed to getting that information. You know, I really would have anything.
So.
You've got a hand up over there.
Yes, that's okay. I'm, I'm, we're thinking right now, so.
So we'd be going to, I, I mean, I, we have to, I think we have to get that. We certainly have to get that information. Christina.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yes.
I guess I'm just going to wait to hear about that information. There.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I do, just in clarification, so behind my house now, God mercy, twenty-one key door, like, just in case you come to that, I know. Um, so is that now the retention unit is our detention unit or infiltration, whatever? Is that behind?
That's, that's for that.
Is that behind my house?
Talking about this specific, this sediment forbit, and we're.
Of course, yes.
Right there at the corner, I think. Am I right?
Yes, that's your problem.
What exactly is that behind my house?
Can you explain what the sediment forbit?
Why?
I'm just, I'm just pointing out her, her property, that's all. Well, she was asking about this sediment forbit right over here.
What is a sediment forbit?
It helps in the treatment of stormwater before it reaches an infiltration basin. It's used to slow down the water that comes out of the pipe, let it sit for a bit and, uh, allow more sediment to come out in this forbit. And then a lot of that is transferred over into the infiltration basin from there.
Okay, so.
So, yeah.
Thank you for your explanation, I appreciate that.
So does that, so does that info, that does not infiltrate in that area or what does it do?
It depends on, um, they can be designed either way. Some are lined, so that allows for, uh, if there's issues where you're close to groundwater, they would like you to line it or have some kind of clay barrier, so it ensures that sediment doesn't reach there. In this case, we're well above the groundwater in that area, so there's no reason to line it.
How often are those cleaned out?
Ma'am, address one at a time. You had your hand up first, ma'am. Yes. Your name?
Bobby Grant, Wirrow. Um, just a little zoom for thought. It was, uh, years ago that Springfield had great water. I know probably a lot of us remember. My mom used to come from Springfield out to Camden with her empty water jug and fill up three or four of them every week, because she loved our water.
Yes.
How often do those, what do you call them, drain basins? How often do they get cleaned out and how do, how is that procedure done?
Uh, there's a procedure that's put in place after it's, uh, created. And, uh, depending on the potential sediment buildup, it would be cleaned regularly. What's typically done for a sediment forbit is there'll be some kind of measuring stick that's used to measure the amount of sediment that builds up over time. If it finds that it's accumulating quickly, then they'll set some kind of monitoring, whether it's a quarterly or even monthly. Uh, if it doesn't fill up the sediment much at all, then they'll space that out further. So there'll be a initial monitoring of maybe every, uh, two to three months. And then they will increase or decrease depending on the situation.
So they use a big vacuum type hose?
Uh, sometimes, sometimes it'll be some kind of vacuum, sometimes it'll be some kind of more manual device, you know, simply just simply going to have.
Is this a local, are it coast, is it like a bay or what is that activity?
Uh, the contours here represent what the ground will look like if you actually physically look at it. So if you walk back here, it will slope down at a three to one slope, which is the typical slope used for basins and forbes. It'll be a level area and this will be grass as well, so there will be some vegetation on top. That'll be used to control, uh, and ensure that there isn't erosion within the forbit and the basin itself.
So the runoff comes out, goes into this slope, sediment goes here, the water, so this is where everything accumulates.
That's correct. In this case, sometimes it is overflow water that flows into our forbit. In this case, it'll be coming from the pipes, uh, from the catch basins and drain manholes that go into the forbit. And this is a typical design for, uh, stormwater management.
This gentleman's got.
My name's Al Raw, I'm a resident of the town. I think, well, I'll take one minute. I don't go to these things too often, I'm very naive about politics. I don't see what the residents of Camden are going to gain from this project. I don't see any benefit to me. And all, I know there's laws, I don't understand any laws hardly at all, but there's no potential for the water becoming cleaner for the environment, for the community looking better, this project. So why do residents have to fight so hard? Maybe the boards are under constraints, I'm trying to be respectful, but why do we residents have to fight so hard to preserve our community?
Okay, yeah.
I, I don't know, when I were at Jim, yeah, I just, you know, I don't know. If I was to rent a storage unit, could I bring my lawn tractor, my go-to tiller, my, my snowmobile? Could I store that in there? Cause then I don't, no, no, can't do any of that, no.
At least not to your knowledge. They still sneak them in.
Yeah. Okay. Nothing else to say. Counselor, I'm sorry again. Um, our next date, um, I'm going to say December eighth. It is a Wednesday.
Is that the first Wednesday of the month or the second?
It's actually the second. What's the restraint going on the first Wednesday? Anything to roam here?
Oh, I don't know who meets on the first, nobody. I don't think conservation is the third.
Okay, how about?
I hope beginning of the first on Wednesday.
I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Christina. Maddie? I have no life, so it's okay. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Six fifteen or six. Um, what do you want to do? December, let me do this.
It's all up to me, yeah, December first.
December first. Wait a minute, no, no. Twenty-one. What time, Joanne? You want to do six fifteen?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, we're going to do six fifteen, Counselor, okay? Can I get a?
I'm so important.
We're going to be hearing to December first, twenty twenty-one at six fifteen P. M.
Yeah. Second. They all in favor?
Who's second? I didn't see.
Just, just on my education, so you're looking at three pieces of information, some of which I can review others, I think they're going to come. So I'm looking at three pieces of them.
I, I actually, something just came up in my, uh, head before we both.
We asked for an all-enough plan on this one. We have, it's probably going to change a little bit, but.
Did you submit it?
Yeah. I, it's, I'm pretty sure we did, but I just want to make sure we had an all-enough plan. Yeah.
We didn't hear any.
No. Wait a minute. No? Oh, okay, go ahead.